I'd like to call the first meeting of 2020 to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Bill Bassey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. You're probably all wondering what's this guy doing up there and what does he think he's up to and why did he grab the mic? Just to let you know, the first meeting of every even year is the council reorganization meeting, whereas the council will elect a new chairperson and a new chair pro tem. So that is why I'm sitting here and I will be running a short portion of the meeting, so you won't have to put up with me for too very long. To begin with, what I'd like to do is have the pledge of allegiance and what I'd like to ask is, in the spirit of the new year and in 2020, and for us to remember our purpose, which is to serve the people, city of Dearborn Heights, and to do a job of making it better and serving the residents, I'd like all the elected officials in unison to start the pledge. And that includes, we have some school board members who I see, and we have a neighboring elected official. So we will lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to open up the floor for nominations for the position of chairperson. Let me briefly explain the procedure and the process we're going to take. We'll take as many nominations as are offered. We will vote. I will ask that each member, I will announce the person, ask for the vote. I will ask that each member stick your hand out, and we will tally the votes. Once we have four votes, that person will be elected chairperson. We will then proceed and elect the chair pro tem in the same manner. If somebody doesn't get four votes in the first round, we will continue in that manner until we have somebody with four votes. Are there any questions before we begin the proceedings? With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the floor to nominations.
Mr. Clerk?
I move that we open this meeting for city council chair and pro tem.
Councilman Muscat has offered a motion to open the floor for nominations. It is seconded by Councilman Bill Bassey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? At this point, I would like to open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilman Muscat.
I nominate Denise Malinowski Maxwell for city council chair.
Councilman Muscat nominates Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell.
Second.
Do you accept the nomination, Councilwoman?
Yes, I do.
Okay. There's no need for a second. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Denise Malinowski Maxwell is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Councilman, Councilman Coniston.
I nominate Councilman David Abdullah.
Councilman Coniston nominates Councilman Abdullah. Mr. Councilman Abdullah, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Councilman Abdullah is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the position of council chair? Are there any nominations for the position of council chair? Are there any other nominations for the position of council chair? Seeing there are none, I would ask a motion to close the nominations.
Make a motion to move down.
Councilman Bassey makes a motion to close the nominations.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to close the nominations passes. At this point, we will do it in order of nomination. I ask that if you would like to vote for Councilwoman Denise Malinowski Maxwell for chairperson, please stick out your right hand. I saw votes from Councilwoman Maxwell, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Councilman Wenzel, Councilman Bassey, and Councilman Muscat. If you did not vote in that manner, please speak so now. At this point, there are five votes. Councilwoman Denise Malinowski Maxwell is elected chairwoman for the next tenure of the council. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We'll move on to the nominations for the chairman pro tem. Would like to open up the nominations.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilman Muscat.
I nominate Bill Bassey as council pro tem.
Second the motion.
Councilman Bassey, do you accept the nomination?
Sir.
Correct.
Are there any other nominations for the position of chairman pro tem? Are there any other nominations for the position of chairman pro tem?
I'd like to nominate myself for council chair, pro tem, I'm sorry.
Councilman Abdullah? Councilman Abdullah, I assume you accept?
Yes, I do.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we move that the nominations be closed.
Move to close.
Thank you.
Support.
A motion by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton to close the nominations, seconded by Councilman We'll take it in order of the nominations. If you are in favor of voting for Councilman Bassey as chairman pro tem, please stick out your right hand.
Clerk, we never had a yes, a vote of closing.
I'm so sorry. Thank you. This lady's position is tough, folks. You've got to remember all this stuff. Can we have a vote to close that nomination?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you, Councilman Muscat. Going back to the order of business, we will be voting on Councilman Bassey for chairman pro tem. Please stick out your right hand. I'm seeing five votes, Councilman Wenzel, Councilman Muscat, Councilwoman Maxwell, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, and Councilperson Bassey. Is that how you voted? If you did not vote in that manner, please let me know at this point. With that being, a majority of at least four, Councilman Bassey is elected chairman pro tem. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll turn this meeting over to the person that knows how to run it. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And we'll move on with the order of business, which will be the agenda approval.
Does everybody know?
I don't know.
Okay. You can handle this.
No, please. I need to know.
You want me to do that?
Yeah. Would you please?
Okay. At this point, the council has the prerogative of choosing seats. So anybody who would like to move their seats, the order of people selecting would be Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Councilman Coniston, Councilman Muscat, Councilman Abdullah, Council Chair Maxwell, and Council Pro Tem Chair Bassey have their seats, and then Councilman Wenzel. So at this time, if the council would orderly choose your seats, and we will put your name tags in, proceed with the meeting.
Okay, first choice is Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Would you like to remain where you're at, or would you like to choose a different seat? Remain where I am, council chair. Okay. Next, we have Councilman Coniston. Would you like to remain where you're at, or choose a different seat?
Remain where I'm at.
Okay. We have Councilman Muscat. Would you like to remain where you're at, or choose a different seat?
I'm fine right where I'm at.
Okay. Councilman Abdullah, would you like to remain where you're at?
I'm fine where I'm at.
There? I thought you were going to move over there for a minute. All right. Then we have Councilman Wenzel. Where would you like to sit?
I want to sit in the clerk's seat. It's a nice chair.
With three elections looming, you're welcome to.
I'll slide over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get this in order? Sorry about this. He's got my pen down there.
Clerk?
Mr. Clerk? Oh. That one. Thanks. All right. Okay, am I ready? First item on the agenda is agenda approval. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve order of business January 14, 2020, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bassey.
So the one item on one of the invoices, I think that has to go to a resolution since it was never approved by the city council, item 67.
Okay.
I think we need to move that out of this. Need to have a resolution for the council to approve it.
Could you please repeat the item numbers?
Item 67.
Item 67 is butts along counseling services for $31,488.64. This is a law firm that has not been approved by the city council yet. It would, protocol means, according to our charter, it would have to be brought before us to have the law firm approved. Then we would pay the bill.
Madam Chair, I think you're in error, but we'll just incur more attorney fees to continue. I was hoping in the new year, and I would certainly look forward to discussing with you a resolution of this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
By removing this, doesn't mean it won't get paid.
No, it doesn't. We just have to go in order.
Because I believe it needs to be paid.
Put it before us to be approved as your council, and then submit the bill. And that's what we're supposed to do. We're skipping a step here is what's happening.
Council Chair, the charter says, and this is section 5.13-J, "The mayor or the city council may retain special legal counsel to appear of counsel to the corporation council for purposes assisting the corporation council for a special matter and for such limited time and purposes the mayor or council shall specify."
And you're absolutely correct, but that does not remove him from the steps where he has to come before city council. I have checked with several legal sources, and I know for a fact I'm correct.
Well, I would...
I'm not saying we're not paying it. It's just all according to charter.
But the charter is very, very clear in terms of specifically granting the mayor the ability to retain special legal counsel, as well as this body, but...
See, city council came before council to get our attorney approved, and the mayor must do so too.
No, the city council can only act as a body in approving and making any decision. The city council as a body had to make that decision as a body and could not end up doing so any other way. Otherwise, it would not be a decision of the city council.
Well, at this time, I would just suggest that you go ahead and submit it for approval, the actual law firm, and then submit the bill in order, as it's supposed to be.
Well, that's between you and the mayor with regard to that.
Well, if you want to pay, that's the way you're going to need to do it at this point. So we are removing number 67 at this time. And like I said, it doesn't mean it won't be paid. It's just we have to go according to what is required. Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion on the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
So we're taking this, the item 67, out of current claims.
Correct. So, Madam Chair, therefore, you need an amendment to the original motion?
I make a motion to amend the...
Well, I'm the maker of the motion, so I wouldn't need one.
I second that.
Okay. Lisa, can you please? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, can you please do that? Yes, of course. So, yes, I amend my original motion to include removal of item six, which is current claim 667.
Second it.
Supported by Councilman Bassey, and the motion was by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those approved, the ayes have it. Next item on the...
Aye. I approve too.
Okay.
Sorry.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of December 10, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the minutes as submitted from December 10, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in item 4A.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Bassey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is minutes from the special meeting of December 17, 2019. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Move that city council approve the minutes from the special meeting, December 17, 2019, as submitted in 4B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items only. This is items that are on today's agenda. Please come to the microphone, state your name, and you have two minutes.
Hi, Dana Parrish. Madam Chair, a couple of items. Agenda item 9A, local officers' compensation commission. I looked at the letter and the accompanying matrix that were listed on there. Some things gave me some pause there. It talks about giving some raises to elected officials. And obviously, I don't have a problem giving raises to people. God knows, in this economy, we all need it. Unfortunately, when looking at those numbers, the mayor got 15.6% last year. Now, according to this matrix, he's going to get another 4%. We're still working 20% less hours, or one day less a week. We haven't even talked about going back to five-day work weeks yet. The mayor can answer simple questions every month on a simple FEMA concrete repair. Every time I ask that question, I can't answer that. The actual FEMA grant that's at question here from years ago, that still can't be made available to council or public. We still have 20-plus-year-old job descriptions and one director with no job description whatsoever. And how about, since the city's doing so much better, how about reinstituting Headley? Because we're the ones that are paying for these pay raises anyways. The second thing is on agenda item 9E, duties, under duties of the city, this is an agreement between the Humane Society and the city of Dearborn Heights. Section 3, Duties of the City, it's got, indemnifies the city. City holds the Michigan Humane Society harmless, and under duties of the Michigan Humane Society, their duties, section 2.10, the Humane Society indemnifies and holds the city harmless as well. So both parties are holding each other harmless, which is a kind of a unique situation where they're an independent contractor working for the city. We're paying $4,581 a month flat fee for basic animal care for up to 10 days. Now, I don't know if this is per animal or how that works out. I'm not an expert in this field, but I think perhaps we need to take a look at that, especially since they're listed as an independent contractor for the city of Dearborn Heights, and how these fees actually work out and how much we're paying. Now, I don't know if this is a standard contract or how this works out, but if your animal is let out by somebody else, something happens, somebody is negligent or harmful, and your animal dies, not due to your own fault, but it's a city employee, not saying the city employee's going to do anything, or it's the Michigan Humane Society, and they're each not holding each other culpable, who's going to take care of that animal owner? Not good in that contract. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? Should we backtrack on this? Okay, we want to backtrack on, something just came to my attention, on the claims. If we pull out, and this is for Director Salmy, if we pull out 6-59 and 6-60, they're both for sewage disposal, and I think they just got...
Duplicated.
Duplicated, but it looks like we're paying the same exact amount of $4 million, I'm sorry, $420,402.35 twice.
Two different bills.
Okay, they're, okay, I got it. I see the invoice differences, so they're, they're correct then. Okay, yeah, because we, okay, invoice 301-218 and invoice number 301-325. I'm sorry. Just wanted to clarify.
We're good, we're good?
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I don't know if this is the right time, but since we're on it, that was one of the questions I was going to be asking. Why, there are two different bills, but the amounts are the same. Can you...
Yeah.
Well, that's a sewage disposal bill that we give in the Bruce Valley system, and the bills are fixed.
They're what?
I'm sorry. The bills are fixed. The cost is fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Now that we got that settled, do we have any more comments? Public hearing and comment on agenda items. At this time, let's move on. Next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the fund transfers and current claims, items number 61 through 666 as submitted.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Bassey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I had some questions on some of these, so let's start. So these are going to be quick. The first one on number 66. Oh, actually, that was corrected. I spoke with Director John Salmy, and they had the wrong date on the front. He said that was going to be corrected, so we'll get on that.
Right. The invoices said November, but the cover sheet said July.
The front said July 30.
That was a typo.
So that's been corrected. Okay, so that's fine. Next one is item, I think 68 was good. I'm good on that. On item number 621, Director Elizabeth, there she is. I've already spoken with her, but I think for clarification for the council members and for the audience, I had a question as to why the workers' comp, in this particular case, was to Garden City Hospital. And then there was a bunch of other workers' comps in there to different organizations. And I was asking her, why is this paid directly to Garden City Hospital? And she went on to explain it to me, and it made sense. But I thought the audience or the residents/council people may want to hear that, so if you don't mind?
Perfect. So there are six invoices related to workers' comp. Two are related to reinsurance and then Mike Melvin's fee. And four are paid to providers, such as Garden City Hospital, such as the surgical group. You'll see them scattered throughout the claims in alphabetical order. So we are self-insured. So for instance, on 621, which is the claim to Garden City Hospital, that claim was for an employee who required some additional services at Garden City Hospital. That could be a surgical procedure, some testing. So it is based on a 2018 claim, which you might say, well, why are we paying this almost 24 months later? Well, sometimes, if the first responder, for instance, goes to the emergency room and is treated, they might be already in the system because they live in the area and they may be frequent Garden City Hospital or Oakwood or, sorry, Beaumont, wherever. So when they enter the system, we all have unique identifiers, like our social security number or birth date. They enter in the employee's name, number, blah, blah, blah. It might get charged to their Blue Cross Blue Shield plan or whatever they used before when they were just a private patient. So for workers' comp, what happens is it gets flagged as a odd claim to Blue Cross Blue Shield. They could reject it, and then they end up sending it back to the employee and saying, okay, were you hurt on the job? And when they were hurt, and they say, yes, I was hurt on the job, then it goes back to us, and Broadspire reviews the claim, and then they deem if it's an appropriate claim to pay. So in this particular service, was one of our employees who got injured on the job. It was nothing that could be handled at the clinic, so this claim was about $10,000, $11,000, and it was paid directly to Garden City. So it is reviewed by Broadspire, who is our third-party administrator. They make sure that the claim is appropriate, that the correct services, it's the correct employee, and it is one of our employees. They verify that, because sometimes things get crossed. And that's the case for all the other ones as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I also had a question, not a question, a comment. On 664, one of the residents sent a comment to myself and others, and I thought it was a great idea. This would be for Recreat, I'm sorry, just to make sure here, for Director Salmy again. And the question was from this resident, we have, like in this case, Holloway Leaves and Woodchips, most importantly, the woodchips part. And the amount is $5,810. The question the resident had is, why we don't use, and I thought it was a great idea, why we don't use these woodchips for the different flower beds, et cetera, et cetera, throughout the city and different city buildings instead of just throwing it away, using it for a particular purpose, columns like recycling?
We do use some of them, but I mean, we're talking mass amounts of them. Secondly, the chips may or may not have disease in them with different types of trees, stuff like that. So these are basically spoils that, we actually get a pretty good deal with this because they actually take them to a power plant to help power that. So we do have some. We do offer residents to come and get them in the spring and summer, but towards the end of the season and fall, we want to get rid of them because then the leaf season comes and we have to have places to stockpile all this stuff, so it accumulates rather quickly.
So residents can, because I know some residents have called me, and I know they've gone there. You guys do give them out for free?
Yep, bring yourself and your bag.
Okay.
Or your can, or whatever you want.
Okay, great. And then the last one is on 638. It also included 667, the one with butts along, which I know we've taken it out, which was the attorney fees for the mayor's lawsuit or appeal. But on 638, this is one for professional services rendered through different dates for Arton West, Tawil, and Shank. A couple of questions. I know the total allotted that we had voted on was up to $70,000, correct, Council Chair?
Yes.
Okay. One of the concerns that I had early on is the first lawsuit that was started, and I don't want to rehash that, but I went through this a couple of different times. Is that, you know, my opinion was, we, as a city, should not pay for that first lawsuit. And I don't want to rehash the original what happened, but I could not find where it is or is not included, so I just wanted to ask, is it included or is it not included? Because I went through that two, three times.
Personally, I have no idea there is dates. Do you recall exactly what date we approved it?
It was the first, first, first lawsuit.
No, I know, but I mean, do you recall what date we approved this? Because we're going to be doing the same thing with the mayors, too. You understand, we're going to be approving...
You're talking about, when we approved it, $70,000, you mean?
When we approved, oh, that was with the budget.
Right.
Right.
So when you say we, I'm talking about specifically, no, I don't remember the date. It was sometime last year. I just want, my only thing, I want to make sure is that the first lawsuit is not included in here. And if it's not clear, which I couldn't find it, then maybe we should table this until the attorney firm can clarify that for us, just to make sure.
I'm looking at dates, and they go back to last November.
November's, no, it went back to April. I've seen some dates in April in here.
April, okay.
Yeah. I'll tell you what page. There were some in April, I seen it. So that's the only thing I personally want to make sure, because I just don't believe we, as a city, should owe that. And if they're going to do it pro bono, great, no problem. You know, whatever happened, happened, but I just don't believe we should pay for it as a city. So if we don't know for sure, here it is, April 3, 2019.
Okay, yeah, I'm not familiar with the date.
Right, and I get that. So if we're not 100% sure, maybe we could table this until we know.
Okay, Councilman Bassey?
Okay, so I mean, since we're talking about this one here, I mean, we voted on it, so it was fine.
so it was 5-2. So it was vetoed, super vetoed. So even though one or two or whatever that don't agree with this, it was still voted on by the council.
As a body on the whole, as a whole. It was.
Okay.
Councilman Bazey's got the floor.
So that's not item, unless Councilman Abdullah's finished.
Yeah, because my concern is this, and I looked at this, and I know we've taken 667 off the table, which is the fees that the mayor is bringing forward, which we've decided right now as a body that he didn't, there was no resolution done, so therefore we're not going to pay at this particular point until a resolution comes forward. But the concern that I had is so far what's been spent for attorney fees for this audit, $47,680 on behalf of the council, which we had allotted up to $70,000. And then for the mayors, which I know we're not addressing it today, but that amount is $31,488. So the concern I have as a resident and as a councilman, so far, we have right around $80,000 spent on attorney fees, going back and forth, back and forth. And all I'm asking for is, as a council and as administration and as a mayor, let's sit down, find some resolution to this thing, even if we agree we're going forward with the audit. Because otherwise, we're going to keep going. Here's the concern I've got, Council Chair. We're going back and forth with this thing, and as you've noticed, it's been, I think, about five, seven, I don't know, four, five, six, seven, eight times. And every time we go back to court, then the mayor goes back to court, then we go back to court, and this thing can go on and on. I know we're capped at 70. Who knows what the mayor's fees are going to be, the mayor's attorney fees are going to be? I would love to do some sort of a sit-down, all of us, like they do in the Senate, in Congress, until we get it resolved.
Unfortunately, this is an appeals court. It's out of our hands. We can't do that now. We are not able to do that. It's, I mean, I'd love to do that. We should have done that in the beginning. It should have happened in the beginning, but it didn't. It is in the court system now.
I'm not an attorney, but if both parties agree to solve this and settle this, maybe we could stop this madness of spending the taxpayers' money left and right. And I'm talking about both sides. I'm not naming no one side. $80,000 spent already on attorney fees is, I think, crazy.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Conston?
Two points, and just to echo what Councilman Abdullah brought up. Number one, in the Court of Appeals, they do have a specific procedure where you can have a settlement conference. So we can settle it, even though the issue of the granting of the third lawsuit is being appealed and stayed. But number two, the filing of the first lawsuit, the reason the first lawsuit was dismissed is because it was never, there was never a vote and authorized by the council. So, and if nothing else, the attorneys for the city council should have said, well, do you have a council resolution authorizing this action? Because it didn't exist. So that, we shouldn't be billed for that. The taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for. And I, just again, to echo what Councilman Abdullah said, so we have a budget, for the first time, the council separately, of $70,000 for attorney fees. $47,000, almost $48,000 of that has already been spent. And, I mean, we all know the history. There's, we, the council contracts to have an audit done every year with the city auditors. I think the place to start is to get the information from that audit that we had done and paid for, by not to hire a law firm that in turn is going to hire another accounting firm to conduct an audit that'll be conducted and paid for with taxpayer money in secret. I think we're going around and around, and we're going to end up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and have that money be wasted.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Bazey?
Okay, I have a question on item 66. So this is, again, for the lawn service. You addressed the question that I had, one of them, Mr. Salmy. But the second question I have on that item, when are you going to come back to the council to let us know if you're going to bring that work in-house or have it rebid?
Well, I'll definitely be doing it here in the next month or two. Been working on some other things that have a little bit more priority. A being the lead and copper issues and exceedances. We're working on some bid specs for that. But we will definitely have it here to the council before the cutting season begins.
Thank you. While you're up there, I think I have a couple more for you. Item 628, you have an amount for $9,908.44 for 628, for the sweeper maintenance. Is that the old one or the new one?
Nope. So that, I believe that is for the Vector, which is the sewer cleaning machine truck. We had a pump put on there and a hand-reel installed, I believe.
So it's not for the Street Sweeper, as stated in the description?
To the best of my knowledge, it should be for a Vector. I'm not sure what you're looking at.
628.
Yeah, should, if you look in the detail attached to it?
I'm sorry.
Is the detail attached to it?
Jack Doherty Company?
I'm looking at the front sheet. It says, "Street Sweeper and Sewer Supplies." So that must be just the sewer supplies. I see the invoice.
It's actually a vehicle that's in highway, yes. And it was for the Vector truck itself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
One other thing here, I just wanted to know. 627, JPW Associates Neptune Advantage II and DAP CE 5320 BWE. What is it?
It is a handheld device that the staff uses to read the meters.
Didn't we just buy a rebuilt one a year about two months ago?
Yep, and we just bought another one because the ones, the equipment that we have is old and failed, so we're buying refurbished.
I didn't know what it was. I just wanted to know what it was.
It's a hand probe, yeah, that they read with.
It's a Neptune system we have. Madam Chair?
Mayor? I wanted to respond to Councilman Abdullah's comment, but just to indicate that I am more than willing to compromise, to come up with a solution.
I understand, but that's between the attorneys now. It's out of my hands, and it's out, if you want your attorney to do that, have them contact our attorney.
I disagree.
That's not for us to discuss at the table because we have no control over it at this point. We're an appeals court.
I disagree. Council Chair?
Okay, any further questions in regards to the agenda? Councilman Abdullah?
Just two more items in regards to 638. And I know there was some communication between the law firm, the council's law firm and the council chair. Is there any way that we could be, as a council, we could be included in on those communications, if you don't mind?
Sure, I don't have a problem.
No, and I know you don't, but I'm just asking if you don't mind.
A lot of it was because of other people coming to me and filtering through me what they wanted to be done.
Right, but if you don't mind, and I know obviously phone calls can't be, but if you don't mind, if there is a phone call, maybe you're giving us some sort of an update. But if there's any type of email communication, I'd appreciate if we could be, you know, CC'd it on it.
I can state that the phone call communication usually was, where are we at and do we need to go to court? That was just, it was quicker and.
I get it.
Tell me now, so I can write it in my calendar.
I get it. And the additional thing I want to add is, in addition to the fees that we're paying to the attorneys for the council and the attorneys for the mayor, but we also, let's not forget, you know, we have Councilman Yatki that we've been using on this particular item also on a regular basis. Obviously, he doesn't have a specific claim right now, but, you know, we have a lot spent on this thing. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yatki?
Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of things with regard to 638. Councilman Abdullah ended up asking the timeframe here. I think the first hearing, based on Mr. Shank's billing, was on May the 7th. So that would be basically from April to May the 7th, at least, related to the first lawsuit. The second thing I would also note is that Mr. Knappman will have fees as well that he will be submitting, and they were not submitted with regard to this. So there will be additional fees for the mayor. And the third thing that I would note is that the parties can end up settling. I mean, I would recommend that they do so through council, but there's nothing that says when you're up on appeal that you cannot end up settling. People settle when they're before the Board of Appeals all the time.
Well, at this point, we have hired an attorney, and I don't feel comfortable personally negotiating. Our attorney will negotiate anything or decide anything. I'm not going to promise anything.
Right, but your attorney has to basically follow your direction. And if you ended up giving direction to him to end up meeting in a closed session to discuss this, you could do that just as the mayor would be able to speak to his attorneys and maybe be able to get everything wrapped up. Because obviously, it's been very difficult for everyone.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Muscat?
638. Councilman Abdullah, he brought up the point that there was some services maybe that they performed before we voted on retaining them. I think that should be looked at.
Well, if we set precedence on that, right now, the mayor has got several services that were before we even voted on his attorney. So if, you know, it would make his null and void if we pull ours out like that, too.
We wouldn't pay his either, then.
Well, you know, let him present his.
I just want to, I just want to make sure because I had contact from the residents.
Let's just pay what's fair all the way through, is what I think.
About that, you know, before we voted on it, there were services that they performed.
But, Madam Chair?
Well, we did vote on it, but we didn't do the resolution. We had agreed to the forensic audit, so.
My concern on that particular one, Councilman, just to be specific and with due respect to the council chair, it was that that lawsuit was brought forward, the first initial lawsuit, without any of us, at least, I know I wasn't involved with this, or I know we had no meeting on this, and I know you had brought it forward yourself, and I'm sure it was an oversight, but nevertheless, it was brought forward yourself, by yourself, without the authorization of the council to go sue. That's where I had a problem with paying for that as a council or as a city.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Conston?
So regarding item 638, if, because if we vote to approve the current claims, this whole bill gets paid.
It's all in there, yes.
And this goes back to the first lawsuit. In April and May, that was dismissed just because there was no authorization. I would move to refer 638.
Okay, you need to correct it. It was not dismissed. It was set aside until we passed it, according to the judge.
The lawsuit was dismissed.
Lawsuit was dismissed.
It was set aside, and we could come back and redo it.
The lawsuit was dismissed.
With or without prejudice?
It was, the lawsuit was dismissed.
With or without prejudice? There's a difference.
Well, the lawsuit was dismissed.
You know what it is. It was dismissed, so we can bring it back if we correct what was wrong, and we did. At this point, any further discussion? I think it's just fine that we just go ahead and vote, unless, Councilwoman?
I'm just confused by this one. I feel more comfortable taking it out right now. It's 38. We need clarification. I mean, what is the consensus from this council body?
Do you want to pay it from a certain date forward? At least they deserve that.
I would feel more comfortable.
Pull that out.
I'm hearing too much.
What date do we want to pull it out as a regard to?
I don't know what date the initial lawsuit was.
May 7th. So that, from May 7th, anything before, we would not pay.
Well, it would be anything pertaining to the May 7th lawsuit.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't recall. When was the resolution passed? Wasn't there a special meeting that took place?
Yeah, we need the date.
Yeah, that would be the day that would seem to make sense.
We need to actually pull that information.
That might be like in May the 9th, maybe, somewhere around there.
So we should just take 638 off also, get the proper dates, see what's correct.
Well, we do have dates on here, and they do deserve to get paid like we do with other contractors, too. So we can hold part of it, but let's pay part of it at least, too, because we did approve
Well, how about this? Okay, how about this?
It was May, okay, anything from June 1st on?
No, how about this, how about this suggestion? And I'm just picking a random number here. We pay them, and we put $10,000 in escrow, or we put $10,000 on the side until it's clarified, and then we, and then we're paying whatever is still owed to them. This way, they would know their money's there. We're not saying we're not going to pay you. We just don't want to pay for that first lawsuit.
I believe that. I agree with that. Let's hold a $10,000 amount in what we would call escrow.
How are we going to do this motion, then? Really, suggestions?
Well, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton was the maker of the actual agenda.
Well, no, this is a current claim motion. So whoever made the motion there would have to make an amendment, and that, good luck with that.
All right, I made the motion, so I'll give this a shot, all right? I move that we approve the fund transfers and current claims, items number 61 through 66, we took one out, I know, so. 666, with an amendment on 638 that, an amount of, and, well, whatever the amount is on here. All right, whatever, do you have the amount on the table?
Yeah, $47,680.91.
Okay, so we would pay, with an amendment, that we would pay the law firm.
$37,000.